Tuesday, 6th August 2019 at 7:00 PM. I'd like to call the Village of North Hudson Regular Board of Trustees Meeting to order. I have a short invocation. Father, we know that your heart's desire for us is to be at peace with you and with those around us. Place within our hearts the desire to live for you and to listen to the leading of your spirit. Let us diligently search for you. Open our eyes that we might see what is good, honorable, and just for this country and for the well-being of all people. Roll call, please.
Trustees Head?
Here.
Leaf?
Here.
Matts?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Pike?
Here.
President Wecken?
Here.
Trustees Zeiss?
Here.
Thank you. Item two, review and approve minutes from the regular board meeting through July 2019 and the special board meeting 23rd July 2019.
So moved.
Thank you. Brian, is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Kathy. Is there any amendments, corrections, or additions? Hearing none. All in favor of the minute as presented, sign or saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Comments from the floor, it's an opportunity for residents to make the board aware of topics, issues, and opportunities either on or not on today's agenda. Everybody's on the agenda. So, item four. Lakeview Hospital is here to, uh, you know, go ahead, Nate. You can start them out.
All right, well, this is a pleasure to be here tonight. My name is Nathan Pulster. I'm the Vice President of Ancillary Services at Lakeview Hospital. I know a few of you, not all of you, but thanks for the opportunity to be here tonight. What I'm gonna do is provide a little backdrop for what the real experts in the room are gonna talk about, and that's what's most important to your community and our community, and that's EMS. Just for clarification, I'm sure a lot of this you've heard, secondhand, firsthand, thirdhand, or any hand, about who Lakeview EMS is, who Health Partners is, how we fit in with Health Partners that you see down in Bloomington and the hospital here and in Stillwater. So, let me clarify a little bit of that, and I promise this'll be two and a half minutes, if I can do it. So, Health Partners is a large organization comprised of care delivery, so that's the hospitals, clinics, specialty, and the other arm of that is the health plan. So, we are a large, in fact, one of the largest integrated healthcare systems in the country that provides both care delivery and an insurance plan. What you see locally are the hospitals in the valley, Amory, New Richmond, Hudson, and Stillwater. Further west, we're bracketed by Hutchinson, who just joined our health system last year. So, and in between that, you have Methodist Hospital, Regions Hospital, in affiliation with a hospital in the southwest metro. So, that's Health Partners from 70,000 feet. Lakeview Hospital is who Lakeview EMS reports up through. I point that out, people say it's just Health Partners. The nice thing about Health Partners is we maintain local oversight of each hospital. So, every hospital in the valley, whether it's Hudson, Lakeview, Amory, or New Richmond, has a local board. So, I report up to and through a local board in Stillwater, just like Tom Broowski's team here reports up through a local board in Hudson. So, for the purposes of this structure, Lakeview EMS reports up through me to the Lakeview Health System Board in Stillwater. Okay? So, we like to have that local oversight. We also like to look at this from a care perspective. Why is EMS important? It's the first point of care for many patients. So, we look at the seamless care throughout the valley. Don will explain our service area, but we're gonna be, for the hospitals that we serve here, one of the primary first points of contacts for patients. So, we take patients from their home to a Health Partners facility, whether it's Hudson, Regions Hospital, Lakeview, or other partnering hospitals. Our hospital is a patient's choice. So, it's important for us to think about that continuum of care as being a seamless transition of care. So, community connections. You'll see John and his team out in the community just about everywhere. Tonight, I think with the communities and what they're doing on the night out, I think John's team is at a few of those events tonight. So, a lot of what we do at Health Partners is that community involvement. Things like Power Up, I think you might have seen that in some of the schools, Make It Okay, the mental health awareness campaign, and a lot of other events. So, we like to be out in the public because we are part of the community. Our commitment to any community that we provide service to, whether it's the village, the city, town of Hudson, or many of the other communities that we serve in Minnesota, is to be part of that community, not just a provider of service. So, we wanna be someone that you know and trust and come to appreciate. So, maybe three minutes, but I thought I'd give John and Bridget here a chance to talk about the service delivery that really matters to our communities. So, John, if you wanted to come up.
Well, good evening. Like Nate said, thanks for the opportunity to be here in front of you guys. It really is an honor to be here. We're very excited to be here and looking forward to our future with you guys. I wasn't sure what kinda information you were looking for, so I gave you some handouts here. It's just kind of a format that I can follow through and gives you guys an opportunity to look at something instead of looking up at me the whole time. But, we'll talk about our service. So, we'll start out with the operation of our service. Lakeview EMS covers a service area roughly 250 square miles, both in Minnesota and Wisconsin. Our staffing, currently today, we have 44 paramedics. Of that 44, there's 35 of them that are full-time. Those 35 paramedics work a 1.2 FTE. So, they're working 48 hours a week versus the normal person that works 40-hour week, 48-hours, I'm sorry, I think I said 40. And then we have 10 part-time and casual staff. Along with that, I think our biggest thing that we offer is the two-paramedic model. There's not a lot of services anymore that operate the two-paramedic model. We've been very fortunate that our administration has seen the benefit of that, and we see the benefit in retention of our paramedics. In the other systems throughout the country that are slowly getting away from that two-paramedic model, you're burning out your paramedics. The other piece of that is, you know, we're dealing with a lot of life and death situations where time is critical, and to have that second paramedic trained at your level, just, we're gonna deliver a higher-quality product in care for the patients. We have 23 of our full-time staff that are trained at the critical care level. We are a licensed critical care service in the state of Wisconsin. Minnesota doesn't have a critical care recognition as far as a state licensing goes. Wisconsin does, and a number of other states do. The next slide is just the communities that we service in both Minnesota and Wisconsin, and I won't go through them. The one thing I will note is the two-tiered system. What we call that for Lower Sangre Valley, which is right across the river from Hudson, they operate a BLS volunteer service, and anytime that they get called to an advanced life support type call, we're their automatic backup. So, we're requested by them to respond. So, we call that a two-tiered system. Our annual call volume, in 2018, we had 7,173 requests for calls. Of that, we had an average of six minutes and 44 seconds to respond to those calls. Mutual aid responses, in 2018, we had 226 times that we were requested to go into other communities to provide ambulance service for them. Just in July of last month, we did 52 mutual aid requests for other cities just in one month. So, we do far more mutual aid for other services than we ever request for people to respond to us. In 2018, we had 133 requests for mutual aid. All ambulance services in both Minnesota and Wisconsin are required by state statute to have mutual aid agreements with their neighboring services that are trained at the same level as them. So, it is a requirement, and we do use mutual aid. That's what it's there for. And we had 100 situations where we stood by for police and/or fire. That next slide, I won't go through the whole thing. It's just there for your information. It gives you a snapshot of the last three years of our total calls, what were 911, what were transported, what weren't transported. So, again, it's just information for you to look at. The next slide, that is a snapshot of our overall service area, covering both Minnesota and Wisconsin. The one piece of it that you can't see on this is the city of North St. Paul. So, we do, we are the primary provider for EMS for the city of North St. Paul, and we've been doing that for 21 years. Prior to that, the city of North St. Paul ran their own ambulance service. It was a basic life support service out of their fire department. 21 years ago, they realized that they were becoming more of a bedroom community, and they just could not continue to operate the ambulance during the daytime hours. People were not working in the community anymore. They had to look at other options. They looked at us and a couple other services in the metro. They chose us. We've had that relationship with them for more than 20 years. It's been a great relationship with that community, both the city, the police department, and the fire department, and we're very proud of that. So, essentially, you know, when we were working with the city of Hudson in regards to the service area, what makes us unique to any of the other services that were put in for the RFP is we have that contiguous service area. So, the other services aren't gonna have that continuous backup coverage that Lakeview can offer. The next slide, there's just a snapshot of the communities that we did mutual aid in in 2018. We go all over. It's amazing, some of the places that we've responded, again, into communities where they needed an ambulance, and we were their closest ambulance to respond. Next slide is 2018. This is just a look at the 10 top hospitals that we transported to. The reason I like to show this slide when I'm out in the community is everyone thinks because we're owned by a hospital that we bring everyone back to our hospital. Less than a third of our patients come back to Lakeview Hospital. We take the patient where they wanna go, we take them where they need to go. So, if it's trauma, cardiac, stroke, we're gonna bypass the local facilities and take them where they need to go for that higher level of care. Again, trying to reduce our healthcare cost by doing that. The next slide, one of the things that we do a lot of, especially this time of the year, is coverage for community-type events. We, almost every single weekend, we're providing ambulance coverage for some kind of an event somewhere in one of our communities. Sometimes it's not even in our community, we're just asked to come and help out with that. That's just a snapshot of the bridge opening a couple years back. And then our current vehicles that we have in our system, we have seven fully-equipped and licensed ambulances. We have an emergency response pickup truck, we have an emergency response Tahoe vehicle that both Bridget and I have, and we have the capability of responding anytime that we need to, anytime we need to go out and assist our crews, and we can first respond if we have ambulances coming from ways out. We have other operational vehicles, we have a six-wheel Polaris that has a capability of transporting a patient. The next slide, I think one of the really unique things that we have going is our partnership with our sister hospital, Regions Hospital, and our medical directors. Regions Hospital EMS system has one of the, I think, one of the best medical directions programs in the area. I don't wanna get too big, but our physicians actually respond out in the field with our crews, and you don't see that in a lot of systems anywhere else. Regions Hospital offers a fellowship program in EMS for physicians, so third-year residents can apply to that program. During their residency of their fellowship program, they are out in the community responding with the paramedics. The next piece of that is our dispatching services. We contract our dispatching services with Alina Health Transportation. I'll give you a little bit of history behind that. A number of years back, when the state of Minnesota was looking at going to the 800 system, that's the statewide radio system, we operate in three different counties. Sangre County over here, Washington County on the Minnesota side, and then Ramsey County. So, our calls are coming in from three different 911 centers. Back in the old days, our crews were monitoring our movement all day long, and we could do that, but it was very risky. It's not a great operation, and as we were getting busier, we had to start looking at some other options. The thing that really tipped us over the edge there was the 800 system, the statewide radio system that Minnesota was looking at switching to. Ramsey County was, within six months of going live with their 800 system, and once that happened, Washington County was still on a VHF system, and Sangre County's on a VHF system. Our crews would be carrying three different radios, pagers, you just, you could not do it. So, we looked for some other options, and at the time, Alina Health had just made some great improvements, state-of-the-art improvements in their dispatch center, and they were actually, they were doing EMS dispatch for a couple other services outside the metro area on the west side, and they were interested in taking on our business as well. It's been a great move for us. That's all they do is EMS dispatching, and they do it very well. And it's why we can be so efficient with the number of trucks we have on the road is because of the high-quality dispatching that we have. So, that's that. One of the things, I'll talk about that map that you see there, is the Pulse Genius map. It's just one of the things that they have in their dispatch centers. So, the triangles that you see on there, those are our ambulances. So, the one is sitting over there in Hudson, there's one north of Stillwater, there's one at the hospital, then you see one over in North St. Paul. So, this system actually, for every second of the day, it monitors traffic. So, when a 911 call comes in, the system knows which ambulance, based on traffic patterns, is gonna be able to get to that call quicker. So, that's just, again, one piece of the system that they offer to us. So, we still use the Sangre County Dispatch Center. When we started in the town of Hudson, we agreed to the county's request to have Lakeview contact the dispatch center when we go on a call. In the other counties we operate in, we don't do that. We go strictly through our dispatch center. But the Sangre County wanted us to do that, we do that. So, our crews go en route with the dispatch center, they check out on scene, they clear the scene, and in all the other counties too, we have the means to communicate with the counties, and we do do that, but we do it a little bit different over here. So, again, we're following their request in that. Bridget, you wanna do the rest?
So, my name is Bridget Murphy. I'm the operations supervisor for Lakeview EMS, and I was just gonna talk about the last couple pieces here, which are some things that we have at Lakeview above and beyond just our regular ambulance operation. So, the first part is our education program. Lakeview has a pretty robust education program, has for a long time. So, I've been with Lakeview for 10 years, and I've been involved in the education department for nine years. So, this here's a list of the classes or the trainings that we offer to people in the community, partners in emergency response, as well as like hospital staff members, and other clinic workers or healthcare workers in the community as well. So, anyone who works in healthcare is required to have a CPR class every two years. We do those through our EMS department. The first responder training we do, we put that on for any of our fire departments or police departments that choose to have, and they can kinda choose what level of training they feel like is appropriate for their department, for their individuals, and we work with them to kinda cater whatever type program that they need, if they need to be certified at the state level, or if they just want something that's more basic, or if they wanna go more advanced than that. Narcan training, so you guys probably heard a lot about that on the news and other various locations. We do all the Narcan training for the law enforcement personnel in the service areas that we serve, and we are kinda viewing farther outreach than that. We did all the Narcan training for the BCA, I believe that was in 2017 and 18, to have that Narcan available on the first-line responders that go on these overdoses, the people who are by that patient's side the fastest. And then ACLS and PALS, so those stand for Advanced Cardiac Life Support and Pediatric Advanced Life Support. Those are two other classes that are required for most people working in healthcare. The ACLS kinda focuses on patients who are in cardiac arrest, so not breathing, no pulse, the basic treatment, the medications, the defibrillation using ADs, that is required for helping them in that situation. And the pediatric advanced life support is kind of the same thing, essentially catered to our pediatric, our youth patients, our children and infants and toddlers. And we also do, so our ACLS and PALS programs, we host full classes at Lakeview Hospital where any healthcare providers that need it within the whole valley, or we get some from regions that come in, can come and attend full classes, either new or refresher courses at Lakeview Hospital. And then we also have a program where, for experienced providers who have already been through the class, they can take it, a portion of it, online, and we actually travel to Amory, Westfields, or Hudson Hospital to do just the skills test-out portion of that class. So, it's something that we offer for kind of all of our partners in the community. The next page here is just some photos that kinda highlights our tactical EMS program. In 2014, Lakeview EMS joined in a partnership with Washington County SWAT team to provide tactical paramedics embedded in the SWAT team. Myself, as well as three other paramedics, have been doing that for the department. So, we're trained at the same level as the tactical personnel on the team. We operate, fully integrated with them, so we go into operations, we go into any of those events and respond to any of the call-outs, as well as overall health and welfare and fitness of the team itself. So, we do kind of all of the medical aspect and all of the health and wellness aspect of the SWAT team in Washington County currently. So, the next page here is some photos. It's not often that when we see patients, we get a lot of feedback on how they did and/or get to meet them after the fact and get to maybe actually have a conversation with them, or get to even just say a few words. That's not in the high-stress environment that we usually meet them in. But these are just some really, really unique and really just incredible opportunities our crews have had to reunite with their patients after a specifically traumatic event or experience, or kind of a life-threatening situation, where every once in a while, we do get that opportunity to meet them after the fact, talk to them, get to know them a little bit. Sometimes we like to hear more details, or we just like to hear more details about them too. So, that's a very cool opportunity for our crews when that gets to happen. That's kind of all I have to talk about, and if any of you guys have any questions, myself, John, or Nate are more than happy to address.
Board, anybody have questions for it?
Do you have any issues since reciprocity left in 2010 with the various healthcare directives between the two states? In the state of Wisconsin, they have a power of attorney healthcare directive.
Oh, okay.
In Minnesota, they have a healthcare directive. And personally, I've run into issues with my mom, who lives here, has a healthcare directive from Minnesota. She has Alzheimer, so she had to move in with me out here, and I haven't been able to get, she needed to go to a behavioral unit, and when I took her, I was gonna take her to Hudson Hospital, and they said, "Well, if she, we're seeing that she has a Minnesota healthcare directive here on file, we're not gonna be able to move her from this hospital." So, you, she says, "I can't tell you won't treat her, but we probably can't transport her, you should go to Lakeview." So, have you run into that issue with the healthcare directives?
So, I'm not gonna, I can't speak to that specifically. I would be interested in taking that question back to someone that could provide an answer for you, Brian, so.
No, but you don't run into issues in transporting people because they have very, two different types of healthcare directives. I was told since reciprocity stopped in 2010 that that became an issue. But, you can, yeah, you can take that one back, 'cause that's a big question.
I've not heard that we've had an issue with that. All right.
As far as EMS goes, because of the, you know, the rule, when you're under an emergency situation, it doesn't apply to us. Yours is probably more, and I'm just guessing, more of an inpatient type, someone who potentially needs to be admitted into a hospital, then there's different rules for people in those situations, and I don't, I don't know any of those rules.
So, when you're transporting someone, you're not even looking at healthcare directives if they have a DNR or whatever?
No.
Okay.
Well, DNR, we do, but the healthcare directives, those are legal documents written by attorneys, and a DNR order is by a physician that's stating the wishes of the patient based on their medical condition, they don't want resuscitation efforts to be done.
Okay.
So, it's really two different things.
I just wondered about the state-to-state thing, if you ran into that issue. Thank you.
I think one of the things too, again, I don't know how much time I have, so cut me off whenever you need to, but the thing I, again, we wanted to give you an overview of who we are, what we do, what we have to offer, open it up for questions, but I think more importantly, where we're at right now with what's going on. So, we have notified the city of Hudson that we are prepared to honor our contract with them on September 9th. So, they asked us to give them enough time to allow their staff to know when their end date is. So, we, I think in our process, we picked September 9th. We feel we'll have all of our new people onboarded and ready to go by September 9th. What we had to do is we had to, we had to hire eight new employees to be able to cover another 24-hour truck in the city of Hudson. So, our plan has always been to have two ambulances based in the city of Hudson, and we are doing that to provide service to the town of Hudson, to the city of Hudson, and the other community partners if they so choose to be on board with that. So, that's been our plan. Why we haven't had these conversations before now publicly is we really need to get our operation going in the city of Hudson where that contract is, and we've had some private conversations with you guys that we're, we wanna be there for you, and we're willing to be there for you if you wanna do that. So, any questions on that?
So, I think for folks that have been used to Sangre EMS for years and years and years, right? So, this is a big change.
Yeah.
What is different? I mean, I know the answers, but I'm speaking to the people that are watching.
Yeah.
Tell us what the big differences are. Like, we had vehicles that went out ahead of the ambulance with Sangre EMS, is that the case here? Tell us about billing, tell us the big key points.
So, the biggest difference between the operation piece of it is, they had a different way of operating their day-to-day operations. Our operations, and I'm not gonna speak to how they operate all the time because it changes, and I don't always know what they do, but what we do... But what we do is our, our schedules are made up for the whole year. There's, there's no openings in our schedule. When the schedule goes out, we have full-time people that have to work full-time hours and, and they're, they come in and they work their shifts. So our ambulances are staffed all the time to meet our schedule. We do flex staffing all the time. A lot of the weekends, we'll have extra ambulances on the road to cover the extra events going on. We, we know, we know our volumes every year, we watch them every day, we know when we need to flex our staffing. So I think that's really what's different about our operation. And the ability for us to do, I hate to even bring the term up because people don't understand it, but dynamic deployment. Dynamic deployment is a deployment of EMS resources that is used all over the country. And you move your resources to areas where you know that you're going to need them. So how we operate today in the town of Hudson, our ambulance, our one ambulance for the town of Hudson is, is stationed at Hudson Hospital. The crews go there in the morning or at the start of their shift, and they're there till their shift is over. The next crew member comes in, they do their truck checks, and they check in with dispatch, and they stay there. If that ambulance goes on a call, the minute they're dispatched to a call, our dispatch center is sending another ambulance into this community. Even though we, we said we were going to put one ambulance over here, there's days that we'll have three ambulances over here within 45 minutes' time. Because if the next one goes out, we're sending another truck over, till we, till we deplete our resources that, where we need them covering the most. So I think that's one of the biggest things that we, that we offer. Again, it allows us to cover that large service area with the resources that we have and still have very respectable, respectable response times. Does that answer your question?
I just want people to know what's different.
Yeah.
Because it's a big change. I mean, this EMS is the third, you know, sort of leg on that stool of public safety, and it's an important issue for people to understand.
Right. It's very important. Any other questions?
Chief, you got anything that you have questions for?
I'll step up just goes, John and I just met recently. I guess the question that I had and maybe can answer is currently we provide our first responder service to the village. My officers are trained to the EMD level. Currently, the two new officers are not, but I'm hoping to get them in. If you could just speak a little bit to what your first responder coverage looks like, training and those kinds of things?
Yeah.
I'll step up.
So that's, that is one of the things that we're working with the city of Hudson with right now is a first responder program. In the town of Hudson, there is an actual first responder program that, that is operational and has been operational since we started and before we started. And we have had meetings with that group of first responders. We would like to expand that, and I think when I talked to Josh Olson, there always was first responders in the town of Hudson besides the police officers, but they were a shared resource from the town and some from the city, even though the city doesn't have a first responder program. But it was people that live in that community, they live in this community, they may be on Sangkrai EMS, and they may be a standalone first responder. We want to formalize that, that group. And my recommendation to the city at the last public safety meeting was to, if the city so chooses to develop a first responder program besides their police officers, or your police officers, and the fire department, then we, my recommendation would be that we include that group into that. So I've had the conversation with the members on that, on that group, and they are all for it. If the city wants to do that, we, we will do that. So we know we have first responders that live within a couple minutes of the center of your village here. So there's no reason why we can't have them respond here. In most of our communities that we operate with, law enforcement is our first responder. They're carrying the AEDs, they have the, some, some departments have the basic training, other departments take the formal first responder training, and some are trained at higher levels. The, the bottom line is, is a first responder's carrying limited supplies, and they're providing that basic life support before the ambulance gets there. That is the key function of a first responder. So we would like to support the chief's officers that, that want to continue in that education and provide that training to them so that they can be our first responders. And then we can augment that with a volunteer group of first responders within the community. Does that answer your question, Chief?
So would you train the volunteers? I mean, I'm assuming you would, you're talking about formalizing the training of like the police
Yeah.
Forces, but would you train the volunteers as well? I mean, I would think you would.
Yeah, we would, we'd provide some form of training for them. There is, there's grant money available at the state level that can go towards training of first responders. I want to be a little careful about how I say "we'll provide the training" because the state of Wisconsin does have some rules regarding training of first responders, EMTs. And they've, they've made that rule to help the colleges in the state. So to be a service that provides that type of training, we used to do it till the state changed their rules. It's not worth us to go through the hoops that you have to jump through at the state level to become a certified training center at the state level. We can provide the continuing education-type services that everyone needs each year to recertify their level of training, but we don't provide the initial training. So we can't beat the price that the colleges are, you know, charging the students to go through it. And it's just not worth us to, to go through all that work to provide that on a part-time basis. Does that make sense?
Anybody else?
So is North Hudson considered as part of your service area, whether we have a contract or not?
Well, that's up to you. It, it's not part of our service area unless you tell me you want to be included in, you know, in our response area.
So, and maybe the lawyer needs to weigh in on this. I was told at least at one point that as a village, incorporated as a village
Yeah.
That we're not required to have an EMS contract, or a city or township is, but that we would still receive coverage from whoever's responsible for our coverage area.
Yeah.
Is that you?
So it could be. So in, in the state of Wis, so Minnesota and Wisconsin are completely different. The service areas in Minnesota are set up, they're called primary service areas that are dictated by the state. The state says this is Lakeview's service area, and other services cannot go in that area unless they get our permission first. That's a state rule. In Wisconsin, it's, it's, it's open. So the community decides who they want to respond. How it works here in Sangkrai County is the county makes a decision what ambulance service responds based on the community. So this board would notify the county that Lakeview is going to be our provider, whether you have a contract or not.
Okay, thank you.
That's how that works. Is that right, Paul?
Yeah, I guess one other point that maybe to talk about is accountability, because I think the village has had concerns about in the past with, with the current
Yeah.
Situation with the city and how that would work if there's an issue with response times, or if there's
Yeah.
An issue with a call that goes bad, how are we going to handle those types of things?
Yeah. So that's a great, that's a great question. It's, I, I think we are very transparent with our operation, and if, if we have an issue with one of our responses and it's brought to our attention, we're going to own up to it. We, what we've done for the town of Hudson is, in the contract, and it, it states in the contract we have with you guys, the, the template that we did for you guys, that, you know, will be held to a standard, and we will report that quarterly to you guys, what our response times are at a minimum. And we talked about putting together an advisory committee where you guys would have a say in some of those things. And do you have any more on that too, Nate?
Just for clarity, the way we see this is different than the commission that we've been used to. We're setting up agreements or relationships with each community that we provide care. So as an example, if the city of Hudson decides, this isn't working, we're going to go somewhere else, we still have obligations to other partners that we've set up agreements with, i.e. the village of North Hudson, town of Hudson, possibly the town of Troy, or whoever decides to call on us. So from an accountability perspective, instead of having general overall accountability across the entire service area, we would be accountable to this board for this data for the service we provide here. Same with the town of Hudson, or whoever else calls on us. Now, ideally, we'd like to have one group, and that's the advisory board that John mentioned, where we could all get together and have a conversation, not just about response times, but about special events that go for the Badger Marathon, Pepperfest, Hot Air Fair. I mean, you guys know the drill, you know the list. Because that's just as important as, well, you were five minutes and 44 seconds, and we want you at five minutes and 43. So we want it to be bigger than that, want it to be more than that. But back to the original question, Paul, the accountability for each of these agreements or contracts is back to the community that we set those up with. So we don't want to get it lost in the fact that you're, you're going to get, you're not a customer of the city of Hudson anymore, you're a customer of Lakeview EMS. That make sense?
So if we don't need a contract, what would be the benefit to us of having the contract?
Interesting question. We don't have contracts with, with, I think
St. Joe's or something.
No, we have one other contract in our service area, John, is that right? North St. Paul?
Yeah, North St. Paul. It's not that, it's a one-page or
Yeah, we, the, the contract thing is, so that's a relatively new thing.
Okay.
And for us in Wisconsin.
Okay.
So do you need a contract? I don't mind having a contract. I think the community feels like they can lean up against that.
Okay.
I'm a member of the community, I like having the, the contract as a, hey, they're here to provide care for us for 10 years, or five, or whatever we agree to. So, so that's the reason for the contract. And you mentioned accountability, I think there's some belief that the contract gives you that accountability both ways. You know, we have some expectations of you to, to be a partner with us, and you obviously have expectations of us. So that's where the contract comes in.
And the 10 years, I'm assuming that's so you can plan for future and
Yeah. Yeah, our
Right.
EMS is a human resource-intensive and capital-intensive service.
Okay.
So to plan three to five years is tough, and we're planning on the next ambulances, ambulances that we buy, one, two, five, seven years down the road.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Anyone else?
I do have, I just want to bring, talk about Pepperfest a little bit.
Sure.
So I have been in contact with Josh Olson at Sangkrai EMS throughout the whole process. We, we have continued to have a good relationship with them, and we will continue to do that. So I have informed Josh that any of these community events that they have always covered and want to continue to cover, we'll, we'll step back and they can do what they need to do to cover it. If they're not able to cover it, we, we will help them out with that. So our latest conversation as of last night was Josh's primary focus right now is to make sure they're covering their 911 obligation. He's not saying they can't cover Pepperfest, but I'm telling him that if he needs our help, we're there to help. So, and I told him I would be here tonight and I would speak on that, and he, he said that was great. So whatever happens between now and next weekend, you guys will have coverage for the event.
Okay, well, if there's nothing else, John, Nate, Bridget, thank you very much. Very informative. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Chief, you're okay with questions or answers? Okay. Well, we'll let you get back to your families.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have a good evening.
And the next item on the agenda, temporary class parent B slash parent class B alcohol license, North Hudson Pepper Festival, Inc., August 16 through the 18, 2019 approval request.
Stan, can I move to approve the temporary class B fermented malt beverage and class B wine liquor, wine license for North Hudson pressure, North Hudson Pepperfest, Inc., with the effective date of August 15 through August 18, 2019?
Thank you, Kirk. Is there a second?
Second.
What you read was 16 to 18, is it 15 to 18 as it says on the issue statement, or is it
On the application, he requested the 15th.
Okay, so, all right, so his motion was good, all right.
Are we good?
Yep.
Okay, is there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the temporary license approval for Pepper Festivals, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
Abstain, thanks, too. Okay, next item, amended class B slash parent class B liquor license for extended premises Seasons Tavern on Saturday, August 17. Is there a motion?
I'm looking for it here. Okay, move that the class B, class B retail license for the sale of fermented malt beverages and intoxicating liquors for Seasons Tavern be temporarily amended for an event taking place Saturday, August 17, 2019, from 8:00 a.m. until midnight with the following conditions. Number one, area outside of building to be completely enclosed with fence and extended premises accessed only from a single access point. Number two, use of alcohol shall remain within the building or fenced-in area per the establishment's liquor license. Number three, use of outside area only with specific permission of village board for requested date and time. Item four, owner to provide equal amount of adjacent substitute off-street parking while parking lot areas fenced during the time of event. Item five, owner to be responsible for DJ music volume. Item six, all outside music to end no later than 10 p.m.
Brian, is there a second?
My second.
Thank you, Lori. Questions or comments? This has been done every year, it's been done already, I think, so if there's no other questions, all in favor of the amended class B license for Seasons Tavern, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item seven, 2019, 2020, class parent A beer and, and parent class A cider-only license and cigarette license for Freedom Value number 72. Which is our
I move to approve the class A fermented malt beverages and class A cider-only license and the over-the-counter tobacco sales license with an effective date to be determined through June 2020 for Evergreen Midwest LLC, DBA, Freedom Value 72, Dana Bjornstedt agent. Licenses not to be issued until current licenses for that location are returned to the village and a definite definitive start date is given.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Brian.
What, I don't understand that last part.
Yeah, I mean
They, there's a new corporation, new owner of
Mm-hmm.
Freedom
Okay.
Coming in, and they don't have a definite date yet.
Okay.
It should be sometime this month, so we can, you guys can approve the license, but I will not issue them until they have that
Till they satisfied that part.
Ah, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the license for Freedom Value 72, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item eight, resolution 2019-05, requesting Item eight, resolution 2019-05, requesting exemption from county library tax approval requested. Is there a motion?
I'm looking for it.
I guess we can so move on your suggestion, because I'm machine the motion in our packet.
Oh, it's just a, yeah, so moved.
So move.
Okay.
I'll second Tim's so moved.
Okay. And just, this is, we do this every year because we're in the joint library with Hudson. This allows us to not pay the county tax, which, and we end up, we pay for the Hudson Community Library, and it saves us quite a bit of money, you know, by being involved in the community library, so. Any other questions or comments in this? Hearing none, all in favor of the exemption from the county library tax, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item nine, request from Pepper Festival to move fencing behind the village hall, discussion possible approval.
Stan, can I move to request the cocaine of the Pepper Fest moving the fence behind the village hall?
Thanks, Kirk. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. And comments or questions?
So basically, we purchased the, we-
Yeah, go ahead.
Purchased the house behind here, so now they're going to start the first process of moving the fence to the proper grounds of where the new park's going to be.
Actually, did we purchase it?
Pepper Fest.
We as in the community?
Okay.
Or actually Pepper Fest?
Pepper Fest.
Yeah, not the board.
All right.
Not that.
Okay, so, any other comments or questions or-
Who's moving it?
The Pepper Fest.
It's on though. And if you can make that motion contingent on the attached agreement-
Yep, I would add that to it.
Contingent on the attached agreement signed.
All right, okay.
I need a new second.
Second on the amendment.
Kirk's got the motion. Brian's got the second, real good with the-
And the fence goes back after Pepper Fest, is that what it's going to happen?
No, the intention is we keep it there until the, any debt that's pretty much against the property, at that point then, there might be some adjustments to that fence overall. We come back to the board, and then eventually the intentions are to give the overall property and whatever is put upon that property to the village, and then they would own the fence. I mean, it's still on the fence, but they would have the fence, so.
Unless we want it, the board wants it moved back.
Based on any other type of thing that we went against, any type of, within this agreement here, yes, if they feel that it needs to be moved back, then we would move it back.
Okay, and anyone else? Okay, all in favor of the request, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
Tim abstain, thank you. Item 10, new business from the board or staff. And the only president's comment I have is that, and you've heard Matt hit, don't you, and everybody knows it, it is Pepper Festival coming up in, well, next week from Friday. So anybody that would care to help volunteer, I'm sure, Tim, you're always welcoming volunteers down there, yes?
Correct.
So there'll be opportunities. They usually start around supper time or a little after, there's always plenty to do. So anybody that would be interested in helping out, you know, get Pepper Festival set up, it's a great community event, and I hope everybody has a safe and enjoyable time there. Okay, so, Melissa?
Just announcement that budget time has started. The operating budget timeline has been passed out to the department heads, and budget meetings will begin the end of September or early October.
Thank you. Next item, 11, the planned commission recommendations, they did not meet, I don't believe. Item 12, personnel finance committee recommendations, A is claims and approvals, claims approval requested.
Stan, can I move to recommend the board to approve the August 2019 non-recurring claims of $163,602.52?
Thank you, Kirk. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kathy. Questions or comments? This is a bigger number because we paid our second half fire, second half library, and-
Hot patching.
Hot patching, so those bigger numbers are in there, so. And it's a spending issue, so Kathy?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Then yes.
Thank you. Item B is amend employee handbook, approval requested. Two different portions.
Stan, can I move to amend the employee handbook to revise on-call language for part-time, non-exempt public works personnel to read, quote, "three hours at the employee's regular rate of pay per hour," in parentheses, or $50 slash a day, whichever is greater, close parentheses, "to be on-call and perform checks," which for them is the lift stations.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks. Comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the, of the, item one of the employee handbook, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item two, revise overtime and compensatory time language for non-exempt employees.
Stan, I move to amend the employee handbook to revise overtime and compensatory time language as provided on the attached documents.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Tim. Comments or questions on this? This is language cleanup, right?
Yes, this is to clarify some language, it's not adding or taking away anything from those employees.
Thank you. Okay, other questions, all in favor of the second item for amending the employee handbook, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item C, contract with city of Hudson for additional staffing during Pepper Festival approval requested.
Stan, can I move to allow Chief Richards to enter into a contract with the city of Hudson Police Department for additional police patrol coverage during the 2019 Pepper Festival weekend due to North Hudson PD staff levels?
Thank you, Kirk. Is there a second?
Second.
Kathy or Lori? Okay, Kathy, thank you. Any comments or questions? I think everybody is aware that we're short, and this is a nice opportunity to have somebody, you know, to have you guys to have some extra help.
Is one of them offer Sir Moody? No, dang it. Knows our community.
What are the hours, chief, just to base, you know, the contract hours that are going to be made, that came up in one of our financial discussions today?
Yeah, I believe, and I don't have the document in front of me, but I believe that we have scheduled for 10 hours on Friday, 10 hours on Saturday, and then, I believe, six hours on Sunday because it's a shorter evening, so. And those, just for clarification, those officers will be assigned to the patrol of the village, so they will not be assigned to Pepper Fest specifically, so they will take calls for service, they will back up our officers. If there's violation of ordinances, we will ask them to gather the information, and then our officers will issue any citations that might need to take place. This gives me an opportunity, which I did not have last year because we were short-staffed, to have patrol officers assist me on grounds to get to know the community, their brand, you know, they're both hired in December, they've never been through, one has lived through a Pepper Fest because he's local, but never worked one. The other one could not tell you where Pepper Fest was located before our staff meeting last week. So it gives me an opportunity to introduce them to the community, to have some face time, and to really get to know some of the people that are involved. So it's nice for the city of Hudson to be able to do that for us. They already have all three shifts scheduled, so if it is approved tonight, we already have the coverage in line. If it does not get approved tonight, then obviously they'll cancel their officers, but the officers that are coming up to help, two of them are longtime Hudson, city of Hudson officers and would know the community pretty well, and the other one is fairly new, but we'll definitely educate them on where things are at. But I think this is going to help us a lot to be able to intertwine those new officers, to try to maintain or keep them as well, so show them the community that we've got. And then if we do have a sergeant candidate by that point, they won't be hired, but I will encourage them to come and experience Pepper Fest at that point. Because it is an experience.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for the chief? Hearing none, this is a spending issue, Tim?
I abstain. I'm going to abstain up.
Okay, it's because of Pepper Festival.
Yes.
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 Thank you. Item 13, public works committee recommendations, chair update. Brian?
Public Works? Stan, we didn't have anything to bring forward. Our engineer told us the soil borings for the 35 project went well, no real issues there. We did traffic counters on Wisconsin Street for that upcoming project after the 35 project. There's some interesting information, chief, you might want to see about those traffic counters. And then also Patrick gave us a pretty, a good update, which is in our minutes, and they're out there on the website if you want to see some of the things that our public works guys have been doing for us this summer. That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, item 14, public safety committee recommendation.
Stan, we didn't meet, but we have nothing carrying for at this time.
Okay, thank you. 15, public welfare committee, Kirk?
We did not meet.
Did not meet? How about park board?
Yes, we have one thing on the agenda. I recommend to move the park, extend the park hours from 8:00 a.m. to 11:30 p.m. in Pepper Fest Park on Wednesday, August 28, 2019, for movie in the park.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Brian. Any comments or questions?
So last time we did, we had about 52 people, I count at a time, died down towards the end, but it was a good turnout. Lot of kids there, very young, ages ranged. And I also want to do a thank you to PJ for helping me with all of this. He does, very helpful. And then Jim Bashoots does all our popcorn for us, so that's really nice.
Thank you. Okay, anything else in that? All in favor of the extended hours for movie night in the park, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And item 17 is convening to closed session, A is the board may convene into closed sessions pursuant to statute 19.85, parent one, parent E, to deliberate or negotiate the purchase of public properties, the investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session with respect to water and sewer ad hoc committee updates and possibly combining all water and sewer system components with the city of Hudson. Item B, that we discussed in closed session, will be the board may convene into closed session per statute 1985.1, parent one, parent E, for the purpose of delivering, negotiating whenever competitive bargaining reasons require, and per 19.85.1G, to confer with legal counsel regarding strategies the governing body may adopt in litigation in which the village is likely to become involved regarding the proposed Lakeview EMS service contract and termination of existing contracts with the city of Hudson. Do you have a motion to move into closed session?
Move it to, go into closed session.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Lori. We are now, oh, all in favor. Almost let you get away with running. All in favor of going into closed session for to discuss the items I mentioned, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
We are now in closed session. Thank you. All right, we are now reconvened into open session. Discussion of the sewer water is no action, and we're going to have a discussion, possible actions based on the proposed Lakeview EMS service contract and termination, well, we're not, I can do anything with the termination of the existing city of Hudson contract, so we had a, we could have a motion to, about the contract with Lakeview.
I move to approve the ambulance service agreement with Lakeview EMS, Lakeview Hospital.
I second.
Thank you, Kathy, and thank you, Lori. Any other discussion?
I think for those on camera, what was the date that this would take?
Excuse me?
What was the date that this would take place? I mean, was it September 9?
September 9 at 6:00 a.m.
That this agreement would take effect?
Correct.
Yeah.
So we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. Let's see, we started, Kathy started the motion, so we know where that vote is. Tim?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Lakeview contract has been approved, and the next item on the agenda is we are adjourned at 8:00.